Okay, good afternoon. My name is Brian Haggerty. I'm the Chair of the El Paso Community College Board of Trustees. I want to welcome everybody to our special meeting today. The Board of Trustees of the Community College will meet, and you can follow along on YouTube at Want to welcome everyone here. Bell, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Mr. Exer.
Here.
Ms. Nahera is running a little late. Mrs. Moy.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Hargreaves.
Here.
Dr. Graham will not be in attendance.
We have anything for open forum?
We do not, Judge.
Okay, can you read? We're going to jump down to 5.4. Read that, please, Bell.
Item 5.4, Discussion and Take Possible Action on Proposed Policy for Adoption on First Reading to Recognize the EPCC Faculty Senate and Ensure Compliance with the Requirements of Texas Senate Bill 37. It should read 89th Legislative Regular Session, Including Statutory Sections Governing the Establishment and Function of Faculty Councils or Senates. Texas Education Code 51.3522, 51.3523, 51.3541, 51.913, and 51.9431 pursuant to Section 554.071 of the Texas Government Code.
Have a motion.
Move to open.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay, that's after I say discussion.
Okay. Ask if I want to discuss it.
Well, I want to ask the Attorney first. Do we need to go to an executive session?
We do not, Judge, unless somebody has a legal question about this.
Okay, well, this is Mr. Exer. He may have a legal question, but is it a legal question yet?
I don't hope not.
Okay, me too. Eric Spencer?
One more time. Can we go through and have you read these things, items as printed, A, B, C, or numbers, but the list of proposals as printed in the agenda and not read ever one of the letters and numbers, please?
So, Legal Counsel provides guidance on that. I don't have an issue with that.
I hope so, because the Legal Counsel told me in the board meeting last time when I asked to do that, that the window said no problem.
Yeah, there's no issue with doing that.
We'll do that.
Okay. Go ahead, Doc.
On 37, so obviously, the Senate passed Senate Bill 37, which essentially abolishes the Faculty Senate as it is known today as of September 1st. We have been working closely with our Faculty Senate, Dr. Smith and I. Dr. Penley has been instrumental in helping us with this as well as Legal Counsel. This institution has long recognized shared governance. We believe in shared governance, so we have to move forward with the resolution. We're going to be in compliance with the state. And we are also moving forward with all of the areas that we have to implement by the 1st of September. This includes the board. I will have to appoint members of Faculty Senate, including all of the officers. Not something that I was eager to do, but it's what the law is, and so I will comply with the law, and we will ensure that we're in full compliance. Again, Legal Counsel has provided excellent guidance for us as we continue to move forward. I ask Ms. Moy, as well as her colleague, to provide any insight that they have with regards to the resolution.
I have a question. Out of this, in the reappointment, is the structure, the organizational structure, the line, the chart, organizational chart for the Senate, will it remain the same? Are you designating new positions, relining responsibilities, whatever your responsibility with the Senate? Or are you going to say the Senate is now organized and composed as previously?
We would have loved to have it that way. We're not allowed to do it that way. So, Ms. Moy, myself, other members of the institution, went to Austin this past Friday to hear from TASB, Texas Association of School Boards, who provides our legal policies, and get insight from them. They made it very clear that the reading is that I am responsible for appointing approximately a third of the Faculty Senate. It can be comprised of up to 60 members, of which each of the respective divisions will appoint a member, or elect a member, rather, and then I appoint. So, the constitution of the composition of Faculty Senate will change. The officers, I am responsible for appointing. They can serve up to six one-year terms, and then they have to sit out for a two-year period. Those senators that are elected can be elected for one two-year term, and then they have to sit out for two years after that term. And we obviously are working with Faculty Senate so that they can have their elections and have one, they're looking at one-year terms and two-year terms, so they're not all rolling over at the same time. As far as the organization of the Faculty Senate, that will, it can be no more than 60 members. We anticipate that ours will be approximately 42 members, if I'm not mistaken. Murphy Smith. And again, we're moving forward in that direction.
Is that a significant change from what we had? I mean, what exists today is the old.
What exists today is the Faculty Senate as it was elected. That was September 1.
Yeah, as September 2nd, is there a significant change in the organization? The leadership of the Senate?
No.
Okay, that's all.
Currently, there is not.
Any other questions?
Ms. Moy, do you have anything to add, please?
Just that we need to adopt this. The law requires that the college, if it's going to recognize a Faculty Senate, that it be done by September 1st. There is, TASB is working on a permanent policy with regard to that, that you'll have and receive at some point in the probably late fall, early winter. The policy that we've attached is an interim policy. It follows very closely the language of the statute and the requirements of what the college has to do with regard to the Faculty Senate. But it is a temporary policy for all intents and purposes, because the college uses TASB for all of its policies. It's just not ready. So, we've drafted, together with administration, the Board Policy 2.01.02. Actually, administration drafted it, and we reviewed this policy, and that's what we're proposing. It's important that you have also a resolution that I've given you today, then that become part of the Board's record, along with the policy, so that it's clear in the minutes of the Board that this resolution has been adopted and that the Board has recognized the continuation of the Faculty Senate.
Do we need to read the resolution?
I think it's best, Judge, to have a clear record in the minutes.
Okay. Got it, Bell?
Do we need to vote, or you have a first and a second?
You'll read it first, and then the Board will vote to adopt or not adopt.
Resolution authorizing the continuation and ratification of the Faculty Senate. Whereas during the 89th Texas Legislative Session in 2025, the Texas Legislature passed Senate Bill 37, which was subsequently signed into law by Governor Greg Abbott on June 20, 2025. Whereas Senate Bill 37 relates to the governance of public institutions of higher education, including review of curriculum and certain degree and certificate programs. A faculty council or senate, training for members of the governing board, and the establishment, powers, and duties of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Office of the Ombudsman. Whereas Senate Bill 37 in Section 51.3522 of the Texas Education Code authorizes the governing board of an institution of higher education to establish a Faculty Senate and sets forth the policy by which the governing board shall exist and select its members. Whereas the Board of Trustees of El Paso County Community College District, EPCC, hereby recognizes the importance of the role of its Faculty Senate and declares that it shall continue to operate at EPCC in accordance with Section 51.3522 of the Texas Government Code. Whereas the Board of
Texas Education.
Texas Education Code, sorry. Whereas the Board of Trustees of El Paso County Community College District determines that interim Board Policy 2.01.02 is in accordance with Section 51.3522 of the Texas Education Code. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of El Paso County Community College District officially ratifies the continuation of its Faculty Senate, adopts interim policy 2.01.02, governing the existence and membership of its Faculty Senate, to be in effect until such time as the Board of Trustees subsequently adopts a policy to be prepared by the Texas Association of School Boards in accordance with Section 51.3522 of the Texas Education Code, and declares that its Faculty Senate, as designated in interim policy 2.01.02, meets the policies adopted by the Board and the requirements of Section 51.3522 of the Texas Education Code. Be it further resolved that this resolution, along with interim policy 2.01.02, be included in the permanent minutes of this Board, adopted this 6th day of August 2025 by the Board of Trustees of El Paso County Community College District.
Anybody have any other questions?
If I understand, this 313522 acknowledges that it's discretionary at each institution, whether it'll have effect a senate or not. But if they do, they set out the organization structure which you identified. Is that correct? Because I guess there's some institutions, some colleges that don't have a senate. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Exer. It spells out very clearly that the Faculty Senate is purely an advisory board and that they have no authority in any of the actions of the institution. It's very specific. But again, from my perspective and from the administration's perspective, we believe in shared governance, and we believe that it's important for the institution to continue.
But it's discretionary as to whether we have one or not.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, by voting on this 5.4, this includes, this is already in the record, so that we can take a vote. Any other questions? Call the question, though.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hargreaves.
Aye. Okay.
So, did you need a signature by you and Dr. Graham, so that that is included with the signatures in the minutes? I know Dr. Graham's not here, but I advised that we can get her permission and then insert her signature.
Is it an order?
Auto pin.
Well, we're going back to item 5.1.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 5.1, Dr. Julie Penley, Vice President of Research Accreditation and Planning, will make a presentation on the update of the college district's strategic plan.
Hello, photo. This presentation is a quick overview of where we have been and where you have been as a board, where we are as of today, and where we are moving forward with our next strategic plan. Before I get started, a huge shout-out to you, Rachel Bada-Morquez, in Dr. Smith's office, for drafting the visuals. There is no way I could have done this myself. So, this is the crux of the presentation, and if you're crunched for time, we can stop here and begin the launch. But you might remember, last summer, I came to you during your summer retreat, and I presented, at that time, current mission and vision statement. And I asked you to put your thinking caps on and make some decisions, whether those statements were still accurate in the next five years, or whether you might want to revise them. After that, Cabinet began talking about the structure of our work in the near future, taking a page out of Dr. Sadat's book with the four pillars of student success that we talked about at the retreat, with the retreat progress, professional career. So, while you were doing your homework with the mission and vision, we were doing our homework, beginning to craft some general statements and general goals and outcomes that hopefully would align with that mission and vision. So, we were looking together during that part of 2024. Earlier this year, the Board came together and finalized and ultimately approved the new mission and vision statement, and at that time
Cabinet, once we had the green light. I didn't know if I needed to use my teacher voice. Once we had the green light in terms of mission and vision, then we were able to begin finalizing the goals and outcomes that, together with your statements, created the skeleton of our strategic plan. That plan is in its very final stages with Dr. Mo and Director Kristi Freskis on the visuals that will be presented and provided to the college employees and to you, as well as to our external stakeholders. The plan itself goes into effect and is officially launched on September 1st. At that time, budget heads at the college will be creating their new annual area plan for '25, '26 in alignment and in support of the strategic plan. We talked about that at our Cabinet retreat earlier last month. And then we repeat the process in a few years. So, you will hopefully not have to hear from me about strategic plan until summer of So, Mr. Exer.
Will there be annual updates? I mean, see, if we put Plan 25, and then nobody's going to talk about it in '26, '27, '28, we'll wait till '29 and then do all of it again?
No, we'll absolutely be providing updates in Cabinet. It'll be an ongoing discussion, and you say the word, and myself or someone from my division will be happy to provide updates.
I think it's just annually, scapegoats, somewhere.
No, absolutely, Mr. Exer. Plus, many of the data or presentations that we bring to the Board are part of the strategic plan. We'll just make sure to reference that as per our strategic plan, sort of each of the respective Board members, is up to speed on where we are. And then we'll have Dr. Penley provide an update annually.
So, going back to brass tacks, the vision statement that you all approved in February of this year is on the screen. Again, this is the aspirational what you are directing the college to achieve. Not that different in spirit from the previous vision statement. We continue to focus on student success and our role as an educational institution towards that success through our learning opportunities, whether they're structured academic programs, whether they are out of the classroom learning to help students achieve their personal goals. With the general what comes the general how. How you all will be achieving that aspirational statement. It's a lot of words. It will fit nicely in a booklet and on a poster, I promise. Dr. Mo has been doing some terrific work with the visuals, with her marketing team. But the crux of this statement is, again, providing not only the educational opportunities, but the supports, the experiences, that holistic college experience to help not only the individual student, but their families, the community, and the region that we are so proud to serve. And this is not a statement that you all have approved. Your focus is on the mission and vision, as it should be, but we took that vision, if you will, that philosophy of EPCC a step further by generating a student success statement. We used to have an equity statement. For reasons that we will not discuss, we are not touting it as an equity statement. The spirit of this is very similar, though. We see students as individuals, and the heart of this statement is in the last sentence. We are committed to success for every student and for creating opportunities for that student and providing resources and support for that student. So, again, your role as a board is to give us direction through the mission and vision. You did that beautifully. We added the student success statement to double down on our commitment to supporting every student, meeting them where they are. And now we're ready to go back to the goals and outcomes. Again, this is something that Cabinet worked on. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of intentional conversations, how we would support those four pillars that Dr. Sadat has mentioned in multiple presentations, and how we can get a little bit more specific in what it means to meet a goal of progress or a goal of completion. So, this is what we will be rolling out with our strategic plan. What you may notice, particularly for returning trustees, is we now have some quantifiable metrics associated with these outcomes to better provide budget heads and everyone at the college with some clear tracking, if you will, of how we are doing towards achieving these goals. Many of these goals align with what the state has identified as valuable in terms of funding formulas. It also aligns with some of our existing work with our Quality Enhancement Plan. So, although the words, maybe some of the metrics may appear new to employees or perhaps to you, they're really a continuation and an explication of the work we've been doing for years. Some of you have probably noticed there's an asterisk at the very bottom. That one does not have a metric associated with it. I will come back to that, because you'll see that outcome on each of our goals, so. Any questions or comments about the outcomes specific to entry? Okay. Moving on to progress, as students not only have come to the college and identified their area of concentration, how we can get them to successfully complete that first half of their program. So, we identified some key metrics that we have found to be important in that student's success during those critical first semesters. A lot of this is supported by national research. You may have heard Dr. Sadat talk about gateway courses in English and math tend to be bottlenecks for students, so we brought that to the forefront of some of our focus. Dual credit is also a growing population and is something that is, you heard from Dean Bedio last week about the growth in dual credit, so we want to bring that to the forefront as well. And again, you'll see that catch-all final outcome of supporting other departments. So, once we have students and supported students successfully through their first half of the program, our work is obviously not done. And so, our completion goal focuses on getting students to complete their award. And so, these types of outcomes focus on that second half of a student's program. Obviously, the total awards, not just an award for an award's sake, but an award in a meaningful, high-demand, high-wage program in our area. We obviously don't want students to rack up a lot of credits or a lot of hours that are not going to meet their needs, and so we brought that in as a fourth outcome. And then that last outcome, which is beginning to look familiar to you, I'm sure, supporting other departments in their goal efforts. And then our last goal is that continuation in their educational journey, or for students that are focused more on direct work credentials, supporting them in that arena as well. So, this is sort of a split goal for us. Continuing to work with our regional partners through our advisory committees and other outlets to make sure that we are meeting the community's demand for high-quality program training. Licenseure rates for many of our programs is an important part of getting students into the workforce. Transfer, and again, dual credit hours. So far, so good? All right. So, that fifth goal, it is designed to help divisions such as mine, perhaps such as Information Technology, Finance, and Administrative Operations. We don't have many opportunities to directly interact with students. Our role is more of a support function. And so, in order for us to see ourselves in our strategic plan and to make important and meaningful area plans, we added this outcome as a way to provide that support, whether it's by partnering with the Education Workforce Division, or partnering with Student Enrollment Services, or partnering with one another to create ways to fulfill the strategic plan goals and outcomes. For example, my, the Institutional Research Department, which is in my division, the director came to me yesterday and said, "What do you think about creating some better dashboards to track each one of these outcomes?" And I said, "That would be terrific, and maybe you could work with IT to help that department. We can come together and create a really powerful dashboard, whether it's enhancing our current structure or creating something new, so that everybody can easily track this work and not get lost in the wilderness, if you will." So, that's why that outcome is there. And that is all I had. I am happy to answer any questions. We are so excited about the strategic plan, or I am so excited about the strategic plan, and I hope that that comes through.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How did we do up to 2024 on our past strategic plan? Did we meet every goal 100%?
I do not have that number with me. I would say likely not, because we did not have specific numbers for the current strategic plan that still is in place until August 31st. We are gathering some baseline data right now, which will serve not only to guide us on this incoming strategic plan, but it will tell us where we are on the current plan.
So, maybe in one of the upcoming board meetings, you can bring us up to date and let us know how we did on the past?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Happy to do that.
So that we don't skip something we miss in our next five years?
Absolutely.
No, I think that's a great suggestion, Judge. We had some in our strategic plan, which at the time that we wrote it, made sense for the institution. It was prior to certain laws passing. And so, some of them, it's not in our best interest to report on. I'll give an example. So, our goals and outcomes, Goal 2 is drive student success. Dr. Cap is absolutely correct. We have specific metrics, but we can provide data on those. But for instance, one of the goals under driving student success was close equity gaps in student outcomes. That in today's body politic is not something that we would be reporting on, just based on Senate Bill 17 that passed in 2023. But there's others that we can, facilitating college transitions, preparing students with marketable skills for gainful employment. But we can bring a report to the Board and show you as we launch this one, this one will launch the 1st of September. And we can make sure that we have time in the fall to report to the Board where we were on reading those. At the same time, I remind the Board that that strategic plan was during the pandemic.
COVID.
I give Dr. Penley a whole lot of credit for having that strategic plan up and running and through during the pandemic. But I'm sure there are goals that we didn't meet in enrollment, goals, et cetera, that the pandemic affected.
And remind me, again, how do we monitor the progress we're making?
So, the, excellent question, Mrs. Moy. And the strategic plan is so exciting, because it is going to be how the budget heads are going to create their area plan. So, myself, my colleagues in the room, any budget head at the college will be generating a new area plan for the academic year. They will pick one of these metrics to focus on. We will have the baselines for, at the aggregate level. They can try to say, for example, number one on the screen, "I'm going to focus on an area plan targeting career exploration in another an area plan targeting career exploration in another classroom by 5%. So we'll have that baseline number. They may, they're going to outline how they're going to do it. They have quarterly updates that they provide. And so by the end of the year, by next September, October of '26, they'll have their baseline data, they'll have where they ended up, they'll have the interim steps along the way. They can say, you know, I did it, yay me. Or they can say, I didn't quite hit that mark. I want to extend the plan and double up my efforts. So it's more at the individual level, but it is accountability through our, actually through the software that you all were so kind to approve at last week's board meeting. That software was to document the planning efforts at the college.
At any point, they can re-trigger evaluation?
Absolutely, absolutely. They don't have to generate a new plan every year. They are welcome to, or they can extend the plan. Sometimes work takes a little bit more than a year to achieve, so.
And when we're doing any type of expenses, do we point back to, how is this expense going to tie to the specific actions?
Well, we tie the planning into the budget development process. So our Director of Institutional Planning comes to the budget workshop presentations in February to align that because it is resource allocation and it justifies to our stakeholders not only how we're using those resources, but if we might need additional resources for a specific purpose, not just, I need more money for XYZ, but, you know, tying everything we do back to that strategic plan in support of the mission and vision.
Thank you.
Good work.
Okay, thank you so much.
Item 5.2, Mr. Fernando Flores, Vice President of Finance and Administration, CFO,
The records show that Ms. Narra has joined the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Hagerty. Good afternoon, Chair Hagerty, members of the board, Dr. Sarata. Thank you for the opportunity to present the second Budget Development Workshop of the Year, the first being on June 25th was the initial board budget workshop. And so my name is Fernando Flores. I'm the Vice President of Finance and Administration. I'm supported by Ms. Ana Zuniga, Associate Vice President, Budget and Finance, as well as Ms. Laura Theis, the Budget Director. At the June 25th budget workshop, I had said that the main goal is developing a sustainable budget. Well, that has not changed. It is still the main goal to produce a sustainable budget. The other thing that we talked about were that on June 25th, many of the numbers that were presented were preliminary. So we're a little bit over a month later, and the numbers have firmed up quite a bit. We have better numbers, better estimates for expenditures. And so today, we're going to look at the numbers as they've rolled forward and go over that in a little bit more detail. So our agenda today is just to say that one budget workshop is under our belt, is provided on June 25th. And so now we have updated the baseline budget as of June 30th. At the June 25th presentation, it was updated through May 31st. It is advanced by one month. And we've updated the revenues for fiscal year '24-'25, which become the basis for the '25-'26 budget. So it's very important to update the current revenues to predict what the revenues might be for next year. In addition, Dr. Sarata has vetted the additional request with the vice presidents that are in attendance today. And so you're going to see revised funding strategies based upon updated revenue projections. And this will help in your decision-making later as you consider a salary increase. So then we will, at the end of the presentation, talk about next steps towards developing a fiscal year '25-'26 operating budget. So how does the current year budget revenues, how do the current budget year revenues look? So for state appropriations, we see we have a positive variance of $4.9 million. That is about 175, that is about close to the number we predicted at the June 25th budget workshop, up 11.11%. Overhead recovery is slightly down, $84,000, a minimal amount. And so when we look at local funds, tuition and fees are up by $951,000. At the June 25th presentation, they were up about $3.5 million. They were predicted much higher. We have since looked at our revenue projections and gotten a better view of what the summer exemptions are, which exemptions are a contra-revenue account. So we adjusted the tuition and fees we expect for this year down. So that is a significant difference from what we reported June 25th. This is a more accurate prediction of where the revenues will be. And so property taxes are coming in at $75,756,733. That's a positive variance of $2.7 million approximately, 3.65% higher. Other income is still trending higher. That, the large component of that is interest income, so that is $4.8 million higher. There's such a large variance because interest income is something that is hard to predict and very variable, so we budget conservatively for interest income. But interest rates have remained fairly high. The Fed has not changed rates yet, but the world is very dynamic and that can happen very quickly, so we do not rely on interest income as a stable revenue source. But at the moment, it's yielding a nice variance, $4.8 million positive. So we come down to the self-supporting line item. It shows, self-supporting shows a budget of $3 million, and we have revenues predicted of $1.6 million. That shows a decrease on here, but really, because we're showing actual revenues to budget, it shows a decrease. But the self-supporting accounts, we do not spend more than the revenue that comes into them. That's a very important aspect to keep in mind. We are not going to go into any kind of deficit when it comes to self-supporting. We only spend and monitor those accounts very closely in that area. So overall, the way that revenues look, they, we have an increase of $11.9 million, almost $12 million over budgeted revenues. Yes, sir?
Just because I'm old and I forgive that, can you just couple examples of what self-supporting really is, something, what are those?
Sure, sure. So many times, the workforce area is very dynamic and wants to respond to industry demand. So they want to pilot a program to see if it's viable. And if it's viable, the rules call for them mainstreaming that account into the operating budget.
Okay, I understand. Just conception, when you say self-supporting program, does it sound tight?
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions about this slide? So the takeaway from here is when we look at budgeted revenues, $166.5 million compared to what actually we predict is going to come in, there's a positive variance of almost $12 million, 7.19% increase. So looking at the current year as well, how that's going to wind up, this is our prediction for how operations are going to finish this year. This particular slide incorporates revenues and our projected expenditures. So we see that we have brought forward, we have brought forward the projected revenues of $178.5 million, which is a positive variance of almost $12 million. We saw that in the previous slide. So now what we do over here, we estimate expenditures, and we estimate our expenditures to come in at $148.6 million, resulting in a positive variance of $29.8 million for the year. That's our prediction. The surplus that is resulting from this helps to bolster fund balance, which is looked on very positively by SAC COC, rating agencies, and also allows us to continue the practice of supporting deferred maintenance projects in the plan funds. So we have a lot of need in the area of maintaining buildings and grounds so forth. So the college is very fortunate this year and last year as well to contribute to addressing deferred maintenance needs. So this is a result of what we expect for year-end this year. So looking forward towards next year's budget development, this is a strategic plan for that. So as a review, planning for revenues, the appropriation that we're going to talk about is a result of the 89th Legislative Session, which I think has been extended, Dr. Sarata. And so a result also of the 88th Legislature, where the historic House Bill VIII was greatly impacted. And so our revenues for the appropriation have changed greatly. They are based upon performance measures, and the payment methods that they have implemented are different from the past. In the past, we'd be funded on a biennium basis. We get an appropriation, we usually be good for two years. So now that static model has changed to a more dynamic one. It's based upon about 17 different performance measures, and so very different. And also, the payment system that they've implemented is different as well. So that is the model that we're currently operating under. Tuition and fees, the tuition and fees line item here, we've reviewed our tuition and fees estimate. And as I mentioned, the tuition and fees from the current year largely go to predict what we're going to receive next year. We budget that way. It's a very conservative way of budgeting, what you're receiving now, and then you budget that way, expect that in the future. So that is typically what we do, but what we also do, we keep an eye on enrollment. And as a result, we've been looking almost every day at our enrollment numbers for the fall, and that is trending lower. Our fall enrollment is showing some decreases, and so we have to consider the risk of that into our budgeting. So we have lowered our expectation for tuition and fees by $1.1 million as a result of what we're seeing for enrollment for this fall. Now, that does not mean that that's the ultimate number we're going to use because, as you know, the budget is presented on August 27th to the board for approval. So between now and August 27th, our enrollment may get better to the extent where we adjust our revenue estimates.
What does our past information show that it has increased between those weeks?
The past information shows that we had a slight increase at this point in time. And at this point in time, we have a very small decrease predicted. But at this point in time, last year, we showed that we were, we had a positive increase in enrollment. So right now, it is not positive. It is showing a negative number, so we consider that as we develop our tuition and fees prediction. And we'll continue to do that all the way up until we finalize and present a final budget for you. So it may go up, or if it needs to go down a little bit, it'll be decreased as well. The nice thing about what the college has done historically to budget for this, to mitigate that risk of enrollment declining, the college maintains a biennium reserve. That biennium reserve is meant for just such a situation.
We're currently flat, Judge. We're at 18,810 right now. We were at 18,857 last year. We've seen the enrollment process tighten as we've got closer to the fall semester. In contradiction with what we saw in the spring, we saw very healthy spring, 5% increase in the spring. The summer was very healthy as well, significant increase this summer. All of those are indications that we expect to see a strong fall, but it is weakening as we get closer. And so I asked Vice President Flores to adjust the budget accordingly. I didn't want there to be any surprises, and so it's, we're much more conservative with the budgeting process, so I asked that he adjust the budget, in particular tuition and fee, accordingly. If anyone has specific questions, I ask Dr. Maya for his thinking, for Dr. Maya to jump in.
Just real quick, you mentioned something about the current session. Is there any realistic or expectation or current special sessions for the budget? Is that really set? The special session is going to be the thing?
So the special session, it's a great question, Mr. Flores. Lots of different items on special session, which essentially, we know that many of our legislators are not in Austin, and so we'll see what ends up happening. I would imagine the government will call a second special session and potentially more until the maps come to completion. There is an item on the special agenda that pertains to us specifically, and it is tax rate. Now, that won't affect his current year's budget, but that could affect the college budget going forward. I don't know if you have any, Judge, or any other member has any other questions on enrollment. Again, we're continuing to run enrollment, and we will run enrollment through the first week of class. We allow some scheduled adjustments, and then obviously, dual credit early college high school will continue to work with our district partners all the way up until census date. And actually, I remind the board that we have many ministers throughout, so even on census date, when we report an enrollment, that's not the final enrollment because we have many students that go out throughout the fall term. Dr. Maya, please.
Sure. So point time, as Dr. Sarata mentioned, we're basically flat with 47 students down from last semester at the same date. Classes start August 25th. We have several campaigns going on right now where we are reaching out to students who have enrolled but haven't completed their FASA or either completed their FASA. So we have internal campaigns going on. Trailers is one of our partners as well. They're assisting us with those students needing assistance with financial aid. So we continue to ask students also, as Dr. Sarata mentioned, through dual credit early college high school enrollment because we still receive those rosters from our ISD partners. So we are working to get our enrollment, keep our enrollment up. And also, wherever we end up today, the really important number is where we end up at census date, which is September 10. So we worked really hard to get our students enrolled and, sorry, yeah, we worked hard to get our students enrolled and paid by the, by census date. So we try to reduce the number of students that we end up having to drop for non-payment. So lots of campaigns going on, and we still have extended hours coming up this Saturday, August 16th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., August 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as well as extended hours the week before classes start. hours the week before classes start, and the first two days of enrollment. As Dr. Zirata mentioned, we still allow students to enroll as long as a class hasn't met, or via petition through a dean.
Have we done any analysis on how many students are not returning, or how many we expect to return but are not?
I can look at, we do see what our continuing student enrollment looks like. So, we also, along, we're looking very healthy. It's been the past couple of weeks that we've seen this slowdown, and one of the markers that we do look at is our continuing students. So, that's where we've seen a little bit of decline, so there are captive audience. So, we're reaching out to those students as well. If they enrolled, haven't graduated, enrolled in spring or summer, and not enrolled in fall, we're reaching out to those students as well. Okay, thank you.
So, we're going to continue looking at tuition and fees and adjust accordingly up until we present you a final budget on August 27th. The next item are property taxes. This is a number that has been finalized in the budget. On July 25th, we received the certified valuations from the CAD, and our valuations went up about $4.6 billion to $73.46 billion. And also, we had new property valued at $1.5 billion, and resulting in a no-new revenue rate of $10.3563 per $100 valuation. That is down from $10.77, almost half a penny down. So, that is driving our ability to raise tax revenue, should the college ever need that. As a reminder, we are capped at $0.15 per $100 valuation. So, anything driving our rate lower is good for the future, should it be needed. Now, planning for additional funding requests, today, one of the items on the agenda is consideration of a salary increase. So, the presentation before that on the budget is to inform what the capacity is for the district to fund a salary increase, and also, additional funding requests that have been presented by the executive levels that you're going to see in just a little bit. At this point in time, what has changed from June 25th is that Dr. Zirata has had a chance to vet the additional request and dropped them by close to half a million dollars. So, it is a significant decrease. And so, there is going to be continued impact from the GASB 68 and 75 on unrestricted net position. That is a very variable amount. We depend on the information from the state, which we do not have yet, but still, it's something that needs to be considered. It averages about $4 million impact to our fund balance every year. And so, an additional GASB that Anna and her team are working on in accounting is GASB 101, compensated absences. These are things that we are mandated to follow by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Otherwise, we would get an unmodified, we would not get an unmodified opinion, and the financial statements that the college produces are super important to receive the appropriation, to get Pell, and are viewed by many granting agencies. So, a very important document to the district. So, looking at our performance here, this is our appropriation. This is not changed from the June 25th presentation, looking at the terminology near final. This is a terminology from the coordinating board, so that implies that there might be some changes to that, but that's the best number that we have for appropriation. I will tell you that that $43.9 million is a projection by the coordinating board on what we're going to earn as appropriation. Once we report our actual enrollment numbers to the coordinating board, it will be different from that, but we don't know by how much. So, that number will change either a little bit or a lot. We don't know at this point. It's the best number that we have so far. And so, that's the, some of the criteria that now go into the appropriation, that is very different from the biennium funding that we used to receive two years ago. So, House Bill VIII also changed the way we receive that particular appropriation and any future appropriations in coming years. So, we just have to be aware of how the funding for appropriation comes in. It comes in in three installments now, which is different from the past. It used to come in in 10 installments. So, the state has changed not only the performance measures, but how they distribute the funding to the colleges in Texas. Other state funding, the financial aid for SWIFT, TRANSFER, FAST is budgeted at $5.6 million. So, that has gone up $175,000 from the presentation on June 25th. The reason that that has gone up is because now we have received the allocation for the fall of 2024. We know what that amount is, and then also, we know what the numbers that were reported for the spring. So, since Ms. Zunica had that information, she was able to update her revenue projection for the FAST. Also, keep in mind that the state increased the funding from $0.56.87 per semester credit hour to $0.58.52 per semester credit hour. As far as benefits are concerned, for the first time in several years, the state has raised the premium rates for health insurance. They raised them by 8%. And so, the state currently funds our health insurance at about, close to 50%. They don't provide us funding for physical plant personnel, however. We have to budget for that, and the grants pay for their own health insurance benefits. However, due to the 8% increase, that is going to result in a must-be-funded or critical item that you're going to see on the additional funding request of $704,000, you're going to see in a little while. The reason is the state increased our rate by 8%. We incur close to $7.7 million of health insurance costs that we fund, and so, you can do the extension on that. There's no change in the state contribution rate for TIRS. So, just as a reminder, last presentation, we talked about the change in the purchasing mandatory bidding requirement from $50 to $100,000, and the board discussed this particular item and agreed that for the next coming fiscal year, the board would also like to see competitive processes that are done for anything valued at $100,000 or more. The college is working to update its procedures, their purchasing procedures with regard to this, and you'll see that in the August 27th board meeting. So, now we look at the projection for revenues for '25, '26. So, as I mentioned, the current year is the basis for projections going into the future, and largely, that's what this represents. On the state appropriations line, we show an increase to the appropriation compared to the current year. That is a result of the college performing better on its performing, on its performance measures that were reported last year. Last year, the college received a $4.7 million dynamic adjustment over what the coordinated board had predicted for us. That was a very positive result for the year. This appropriation increase largely reflects that, and also, the increase in the FAST funding rate from $56 to $58 per semester credit hours. Overhead recovery, we predict a small decrease of $84,000 there. On the local funds, tuition and fees, we have a small decrease predicted there. We are continuing to look at this item. This is the item we talked about. We're looking at the fall enrollment, and we will adjust accordingly, leading up to the final budget presentation. Either up or down, we're going to adjust it. The idea is to produce a sustainable budget, and that is our key objective. And so, property taxes, now that we have the certified valuations and the no-new revenue rate, we predict that we're going to receive at least $75.2 million in property tax revenue. The property tax revenues, we budget very conservatively for those. The big, the big thing on that is that the certified values that the CAD provides, the taxing entities, are discounted about 2.8%. So, when the college receives those values, they're lower by 2.8% because they are predicting what refunds and lawsuits may result in, so that the government agencies like that because it results in a more conservative budget, just in case you have a large refund or a large lawsuit that may happen. So, our property tax revenue is based upon certified rate 2.8% lower. However, when property tax owners are mailed their statements, those do not contain that discount. So, generally, we receive more revenue than what we budget, because the CAD is very good at resolving those protests, and so, the CAD, the city collects 100% of the valuation that they mailed out. But we budget conservatively, and in doing so, we're still predicting $2.1 million higher. Other income, we continue to budget interest income very conservatively at $5 million. As I said, interest income is something that's unpredictable, and something that's sustainable, so we don't fail our budget on that. We failed $5 million, it's very achievable. Even if the Fed cut rates by more than half, we would still be able to score our budget. And the future does not predict that kind of decline in rates, so we fail confident about what we're budgeting for. So, we see, overall, the takeaway here is this $173.9 million is our total projected revenues for next year. We cannot exceed that as we develop a budget, so that's our line in the sand. It's an increase of $7.4 million over budgeted revenues for '24, '25. So, how do those budgeted revenues, how do they look like in terms of source of funding? Property taxes continue to be the largest revenue source at 43.27%, $75.2 million, followed by appropriations, almost $50 million, tuition and fees. Those are the three largest revenue sources, and then we have other income, self-supporting, and overhead recovery. So, this is showing the previous slide by percentage of revenue source. And so, we get to the baseline budget. This is a result of all the budget submissions by the executive levels, all the vice presidents and associate vice presidents. So, the budget office works to compile all of these budgets, review them, and so, those budget submissions also include additional requests that we're going to talk about in a little bit, but this is the baseline budget. This is nothing above what they had the year before. So, the baseline budget shows a decrease of $1 million. That reflects the movement of positions, people leaving the college at a high salary, and then the recruit, the people recruited coming in at a lower salary. So, that largely is the result of that. So, you see an increase in the baseline budget from '24, '25 to '25, '26, which is the middle column of $1,590,000. And so, the other section in here is the self-supporting area, and they always budget at break even. They cannot exceed what they had budgeted for, so that is budgeted at break even, no effect on the baseline budget. So, then, this baseline budget, reflected by functional area, would be distributed like this. So, Dr. Smith is still in the lead here, $54.27 million, 33.11% of the budget, and then followed by institution support at almost $50 million, 30%. Academic support, which also belongs to Dr. Smith, $20.3 million, 12.28%, and operations and maintenance. Physical plant, $13 million. Student services, 12.7. Transfers, 3.5. Public service, 2.8, self-supporting free, and research at $214,000. So, this is the way that the baseline budget is allocated by functional area. So, you see the same baseline budget distributed by expense categories. So, in here, the largest category is faculty salaries at 34.13%. And then you can see in the block here how that details out between full-time and part-time faculty, and then over here, staff salaries, close to $50 million, and you see the detail between full-time and part-time over here, and overtime, and then followed by supplies and services, $28 million. 17% of the budget benefits, $14 million. Transfers, 7.5. Contingency, 6.5. Travel, 1.3. Equipment, 1.1. So, this is how the expenses break out for the baseline budget. The interesting thing here, if you add faculty salaries, staff salaries, and benefits, you get close to 73% of the budget.
Real quick, sometime ago, there was a question about having a part-time, there's split between part-time and full-time faculty, I think. Is there any question about, do we have to look at those kinds of SACs evaluations? Are we still okay there?
We are to date, Mr. Ester. So, what Mr. Ester is referencing is, 12 years ago, we had a SACs onsite visit, our accrediting agency, SAC COC now, Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, Commission on Colleges, did a visit, and they broke down our faculty ratios in a different manner than they had ever done before. We're one accreditation, one college, five campuses, six sites total. And what they did, this is more in particular for you, is they came in and they said, they looked at every single program on every single campus and deemed that we had to have full-time faculty at each of those programs and campuses. That caused the institution, we were put on warning, we had to raise taxes and hire 55 additional full-time faculty in the course of the year. Prior to that, they looked at us as a district, and we hovered between 47 and 52% full-time faculty in any one of those given terms during that, the five years preceding. When they came, we were just under 48%. We turn around, we hired those full-time faculty. Dr. Smith and his team did a tremendous job of hiring again 55 additional full-time faculty. We were taken off morning, following summer, and at one point, I believe that we had 72% of our sections taught by full-time faculty, despite the ratios. So, you see that the full-time faculty salaries are just over the part-time faculty, but our full-time faculty teaches the bulk of the courses at the institution. I don't recall where we are currently, Mr. Ester. The last time I saw was 72%. I'm not sure where we are now.
Yeah, I think we're down around 68% currently. Every position that becomes available or is requested for faculty gets discussed. The leadership, our structural deans and ADPs talk about every single position, look at the ratios that are being referred to across the district before we make a determination on hiring.
The, when we don't have any, we're not concerned about the fact that it's...
It's a great, great question, Mr. Ester, bringing me back to the actual question. We just had an accrediting site visit. We were in '23. This was not anything they came up with, with the site visits or the off-site visit. We were found in compliance with the... We were found in compliance with the ratio of full-time.
So you don't worry that?
The next time is in 2028, where it will come up, and they'll look at that closely. We want to make sure that we're always in a good position.
So this is a look at what the additional funding requests for '25, '26 are. Under the critical needs, overall, there's a request for $1.7 million. What changed from the June 25th presentation is we had initially submitted a request for $264,000 in increase in insurance premiums. Well, now the insurance carriers have provided what they're going to ask for through insurance. So we lowered that to what the increase is for insurance rates. So that has been lowered. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the increase of 8% to the health insurance. Originally, we had estimated $450,000. We were out on that. We were too low. We updated our numbers, our projections for health insurance costs. 8% of that cost has resulted in $704,000 that we need for health insurance. The other must-be-funded items have not changed from the last presentation. Under the other funding request from executive levels, that has decreased from $2.4 million down to 1.956, a decrease of about $400,000, a little over $400,000. The main decrease came in the instruction, the workforce education area. So that's the main decrease there. So this slide is a compilation of the big numbers that we saw for projected revenues. The first row shows the number that we covered under total projected revenues, 173.9 million. So we cannot exceed that. That's going to be our top of the budget line. And the baseline preliminary budget is $165.4 million. I'm looking in the no-salary-increase column, just to start a review of this particular slide. It results in a budget surplus of 8.5 million. So how is that allocated? Well, we have the must-be-funded, the increases that are mandatory that we have to cover, of $1.7 million. And then recall, at the June 25 budget presentation workshop, we talked about the 6% adjustment to the salary tables, where anybody making less than $10 an hour would be brought up to $10. That was about $200,000 of this particular line item request. And the difference was a 6% increase to the entry level on the tables, which will allow for recruitment and retaining staff. So that's what that $672,000 is all about. In the no-salary-increase column, it results in surplus for additional requests of $6.1 million. And so we looked at the additional request of 1.9 million. So if there was no salary increase, there would be a surplus of $4.1 million. So the way this slide is laid out, a 1% salary increase has a value of $1,029,000. This includes for the related benefits for a salary increase as well. So in the 1% column, you then see, when you plug that number in, it results in an increase in biennial reserve of $3.1 million. So as you move across the columns here, and look at the 3% column, you see that the value of a 3% salary increase is a little over $3 million and results in an increase to the biennial reserve of $1 million. If you continue across, 5% would result in a need to go into biennial reserve, a negative amount of almost a million dollars.
What does the Fed expect inflation to be this year?
The inflation rate right now is, I think, about 2.4, Dr. Zata, somewhere.
Yeah, it rose to 2.7.
2.7, yes.
But I think the current ratio shows it, it's trending down once again. It's a great question, Judge. You and economists will continue to try and figure that out. They do anticipate that inflation will start to get closer to 2% at the end of this year, going into next term.
Yes, sir.
Looking at this bottom line, additional requests, going to the previous page, it said additional funding requests for '24, '25. It says critical needs must be funded, 1.7 million. And then it said other funding requests, and I don't see as must be requested. But the total of all of that is 44,000 or less, under 2 million. But we take all of that. Do I take that to mean that even though it's not must-be-funded, we're going to say we're going to fund all of those requests at the requested amount? So in other words, that 1.956 million is an accepted?
It's my recommendation to the board, yes.
Okay. That's all.
Why would it be preliminary? Just whole budgets go in there?
So are there any other questions related to the funding strategy options? So what are the next steps? The next steps are, there's an item today to approve a salary enhancement by the Board of Trustees. After that, at the August 27 board meeting, acceptance of the certified appraisal role, adoption of the '25, '26 budget, which will continue to be evaluated. Adoption of the 2025 tax rate, August 27th as well. And then on September 2nd, Laura and her team will roll the budget into banner, and our fiscal year begins September 1st, 2025. So this is a large team effort. Everybody has a piece of pie here. Special thanks to Mistaeus and Herapis, Liliana, Renika, and ADP Zuniga for her revenue estimates. And in my office, shout out to Juanita Martinez and Lucia and Syria and Lucio, who have worked tirelessly on this presentation. They have been awesome. And Shana C. is still a force. She provides guidance and oversight on pieces of this, all the way from France. And so Dr. Zata and his initial meetings in May, evaluating additional requests and guidance on different aspects of this, as well as my colleagues, who are not shy about voicing their input. Thank you to all of them. And so especially to the Board of Trustees for receiving this presentation, and any questions you may have had. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Have any questions? Okay, thank you, sure.
You're welcome.
As always, great job.
Thank you.
Item 5.3, Discussion and Action to Approve Salary Increases for Employees of the El Paso County Community College District for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026. What's your recommendation?
Judge, working with the candidate members, as well as Mr. Flores's team and budget, my recommendation to the board, to entertain, for your consideration, to look at a salary enhancement of 3%. That provides, again, a cost of living adjustment, as well as dealing with inflation, and at the same time, not having the budget so tight that we're only seeing a $48,000 biennial reserve. This would allow us to, a 3% salary enhancement would allow us to still maintain approximately a million-dollar biennial reserve. I'd remind the board that based on an outcomes model, the state appropriations will change annually. We've been fortunate, based on the good work of everyone at the college, led by my colleagues on my left, that we've been able to see state appropriations go up since we implemented this new funding model in 2023, and we've gone up annually. There will come a time where we will see an adjustment downward based on things that the state is putting in place. I remind the board, they're not funding all associate degrees any longer. They went from 10 years to five years in one biennium. We are losing funding for six associates' degrees. It doesn't mean we're going to stop providing those to students. We're going to try to get them through faster and get them to transfer as quickly as possible. But it's my recommendation that the board entertain a 3% salary enhancement for the institution.
Motion.
Move the 3%.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, though.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Nahera.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Now I have a question. You mentioned we're not funding 6 of the social titles.
Biology, psychology.
Very good.
Let me thank the board on behalf of all of our colleagues, our time for your generosity with the team. We certainly appreciate it. We do our best to be good stewards of the budget. Very proud of the work that you've done with the budget and what you've been able to do at the institution. Thank you very much for your entertaining and passing of the 3% salary enhancement.
Okay. The board, we can, we don't have to go into the executive, so can we just do a drink?
We don't have anything for executives.
No.
All right. Go away, drink.